We're using the in-house system today.
We got it.
I just need to know where my camera handles are. It's this way versus this way. I don't have a good side, so it's really bad.
It was working when they tested it.
I'm surprised the number of bugs in that system. You can't tell me they have to put right against bikes.
In front of the room. It's somewhere.
Somewhere close to it.
Well, it's not what they recommended. It's not what they did not recommend this evening, Mike. They their initial proposal.
Was what we're depending.
Ten desk mics we said no we wouldn't.
Sometimes they know what they're talking about. Wow, there's this, I didn't know that.
We that was in our original bid and that's how they responded. They they said, no, we wouldn't recommend the ceiling bike. But it worked at the other place.
Right, so our experience was that it worked fine.
Well, that one hung down from the ceiling.
Well, people can see us.
People can see us.
The mic is lit.
There you go.
Okay, all right, now that folks can see us, we will go ahead and begin. We will start with the public works department update. Gordy, go ahead.
All right, thank you. I have just a few items on your concept agenda and your agenda today. One of them is a notice to contractors to advertise the Courtney Road project for bids. With the bid opening date of January 20th, so that will give the contractor several weeks to to fine tune their bids. We have two pay estimates. One is to Northwest Asher Homes and Stucko work on the front entry to the courthouse. Also, stop it painted.
This is a really good painting weather.
No, no.
Or stuccoing weather, honestly.
Yeah, the challenge now is that our carpenters cutting out all the pieces of metal for the old last best fuel that was there. And we're redoing that, but he can't glue anything until we get temperatures that are abusive to the glue setting up. So, but I think he's got most of the pieces cut out. So we're hoping in a day, maybe next week, to do all that stuff up or by the way to heat things up out there. Then we have our estimate number seven, the final decontractors for the courthouse entry walkways and handrail upgrades. And on the construction side, everything shut down by our specs. Things get shut down between Christmas and New Year's anyway. And the weather just isn't really conducive anyway to doing the work. So both the Grant funded site, Greg Coles, and Roosevelt Great Pay B are shut down this week. Courtney Road, we talked about that, put that path, nothing really new. State parks and the O T. Courthouse parking lot, really nothing, nothing moving ahead on that one. Designer, we're just working on that. We are advertising for our on-call consultants that we do every year. You don't either have the certifications for the requirements by R C W to perform, such as real estate services on federally projects, materials testing, structural, geotechnical engineering, environmental and archaeological services. So these we use when we need them. And if we don't use them, then we don't invite those people to come work on it. So only when we need them and sometimes, especially for the structural, the geotechnical, when you need them, you need them now. So they're the things to have in place. Maintenance side, we are responding to the weather. And so we're plowing and sanding as the weather dictates that we would do. We hope, because we have a lot of light snow on the east side, that it doesn't start blowing over there. We'll have other problems like we have in past years. I think the White Salmon area, west side, we had a lot of heavy snow that brought down a lot of large branches. So the guys are cleaning those up as well as they go. The building. In our site walk around last Thursday, it was snow and the wind was blowing pretty good. It was a cool day to be out there, but we got that done and made a punch list for the outside of the building for the contractor. Plowing in the building should be complete. So you probably saw that they leveled out the landing. So those are kind of the last big areas that they have to finish. And so I think they're going to try and do those tonight, finish them up. So then we'll be down to punch lists because I've already listed certain places where the adhesive hasn't stuck very well. And so we'll get the contractor to fix those locations. We still have our seals around most of the interior windows that have to be redone by the contractor at their expense.
What cost it just that?
They just threw them in there just to get the window set. And that's what they were trying to do and they did that, but now they have to go fix them. Yeah, because most of them are not not great. Blinds, I don't have an ETA. I think our contractor's struggling with the blind stuff to get them out here to replace the microcen blackout shades. So when I have a date, I'll I'll say, oh, HVAC units. They finished the balancing this week and had a phone conference on last Thursday. And they will, they have some ideas. So pretty much immediately after they get this report from the balancing sub, they will start working on the fixes for the areas. I have several locations on each each floor. And obviously, one of them is at your offices. They're going to have an acoustic person come out. And they will, so we'll need to fire back up the units that are turned off. I think they permanently shut down the one in your guys' area. And so that will have to come back on, so he can actually hear what's going on and help with the solution. So that that's this week and.
So at this point, we're just relying on heat from other parts of the building.
Yeah, there's there are several units. Most, most areas have multiple units.
You know, it seems fine. I mean, I haven't noticed anything went by the other, but it was in there.
Yeah.
Was perfect. It seemed quite nice, so I didn't want any blow from across the hall, so.
All right, the painters are back at site this week, so they're hopefully finishing up. And and then in Rob's area, he probably wants to know because the framers and the electricians will be in there this week working on the configurations in those areas.
Kitchen too, or just a?
I think both, he'll probably frame in both the entry into the break room and that front entry.
I know the door frame are in there.
Yeah, yeah, so they're moving ahead. Let's see. Nothing new on the parking expansion. I got a boat, Larry Bell will be about getting that for his council to approve our vacation grant. Talked about the courthouse entry, we're just waiting for warm weather to warmer weather to. Radio sites, nothing new, nothing new on our HVAC, still wait for those who we ordered this past fall. A follow-up issue on Garrison Road, we talked to Lisa Dealy last week about what's going on in the property. Its neighbors that are not considerate. So they've had instances where, and she said last this last year when they were moving cattle, you know, you could just wait. It's part of the the community. It's one of those things that occurs seasonally here. And so people were impatient and they actually bumped one of the horses with their vehicle. Like they, you know, there's not much we're going to do to fix things like that. And then when they're moving equipment as well, people are impatient and trying to do things that they shouldn't do. Like passing when they shouldn't, those kinds of things, so.
But how does how does making it an open ranger fix this problem?
I don't know. I don't know that it does, but I I think I want to talk to the prosecutor about it.
If it is not, if it's an open range, it takes the liability off of the former rancher and puts it on the person who gets their collar, or gets your cow.
Right, but I can't imagine if you're training a drive through a cattle drive and you're busting between cows and a cow takes off here near, how the cows responsible for that when you drove through the cattle drive? And that's a narrow road, so I mean, reality, if you've ever seen pictures of a drive-in on that road, it's cows from side to side, fence to fence. There's really nowhere to get through. So I guess if people weren't impatient, they're trying to sneak in through there.
Yeah, there may be other solutions that I haven't had a chance to maybe dig in and see what other communities are doing. You know, when they move cows, you know.
Is there is there, I mean, there's no notice requirements, there's none of that. But but, you know, that might be something so that if there was, so folks knew. Be not that it's required, but again, just to be a good neighbor. Like if I'm, you know, I lived on before, lived on a private road and I, if I was going to be doing something that was like when we would hook up a new utility where we're going to have to dig a ditch across the road because the water line was on the other side and the houses were on this side and there really was not, you know, other than, you know, and so we tried to be as fast as we could, but we would just, you know, there was, it was just our neighbors. And they own the water line and they own along with the rest of us. But we would say, oh, we're going to put a new, you know, we're going to tap the water line. We're going to run a new water line across the road on Thursday. Probably be, you know, we'll be as quick as we can, but it might be an hour or two, the road's going to be closed. And so if you need to go to town or you need to do something, or, you know, we can figure something out. We're not required to do that, but it would just be a good neighbor to, you know, know that. That's what I'm wondering if folks knew. Like I just know in spring, when I come, I know, I know about the time when those cows are going to start moving. And during that kind of time period, I find an alternate route to go.
I could see where that would be good.
Let me just reach out, just let, it's not going to fix it.
The cows go down my road to catch your cows and they overnight at the property right next to me. So I could just call my neighbor and say, hey, we can get those out. And then I know.
Right.
But I'm probably able to know, so and that would be nice if there was public coverage to those. But the other thought is I don't think just opening the or making it open range is going to make you stop cars from trying to drive past the horse in those conditions. So what about is pretty options like rally races for me to just go on a certain day. Farmer's going to his house between 10 o'clock and 2 o'clock or whatever the heck it is, this close to Rosa.
I mean, that's not an option. Well, in some cases it is, you know, so Cedar Valley is another one of those corridors that gets used, Shilling Road, seasonal, like Dakus Heights. But Garrison, their Thompson Trail Road is, there's no other way to get in and out. Right, so if it closes, you've shut all those people out. And there's quite a few homes back there. So that in that segment, it is a challenge for closures for people that, you know, go to work. Trying to coordinate that might be more of a challenge. But it would work places like horses of Cedar Valley and Shilling, Dakus Heights. It's maybe more challenges because it's one way in a lot of times too, unless you go out to Fisher.
That's kind of what I'm thinking for that one is, yeah, there's nowhere to be to a round available. But if the farmer was requesting a two-hour closure, people could just go before that or go after or there'd be an emergency.
Yeah, if if they, you know, pinned it down to a window of time and sent out notice to their neighbors, you know, because like I said, it's pretty much a captive audience. Everybody else, you know, most people don't drive up Garrison unless you live there or you're going up to the Timberlands behind it, up above it. But I think there are opportunities like that and maybe some other signings, like we can flip signs for load limits and stuff like that, maybe some kind of sign like that, know that they can actually notify or tell people when they're going to do it. Might be helpful too. I don't know, I just.
Not opposed to the open range idea, I just don't think that's going to cancel that problem.
No, and you can't, I don't think there's anything really we can do, you know, if the farm equipment is signed that, yeah, properly, when they go down the road, you know, it's just the impatient drivers that.
Your less gear doesn't understand this.
Yeah, I I don't know that we're going to fix that.
Right.
So. But I think I'd like to have a little bit of time to maybe research and see other ideas that other communities might might have that might help us. And then have maybe some time to talk to the prosecutor to get his thoughts on it as well. Now that I think I better understand.
Understand what the real issue is. What's always the start? You have to understand what the problem is before you try to find solutions.
Kind of why I dictated that way, because I didn't think the solution was the was the.
Yeah. Fix the problem.
Handing out more welcome to the country, this is not the operating pamphlet.
This is for my list.
You have a, that's out here of the whole D U B with.
Oh, sorry.
Issues, right, didn't tell us.
I don't know that I I know that the letters were coming with positions that we have approval to close it, whether it's installing a permanent monitoring.
Shouldn't be.
Okay.
Hold on, check.
Continue, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so I think there was a discussion when we first started that they may require monitoring as well.
Right.
Whether that's, is that letter as condition, I don't know yet. And later this week, we actually get the letter. I'll know if you're interested, I could forward a copy to him.
Might as well, let us all share the joy.
Yeah, but we can fill it up. And so I, you know, this time of year is kind of challenging for us. I I think having our crews do it will be the most economical way. And then what we'll do is look for a window in the weather so we have opportunity to pull our sanders off and haul material and fill it from our course. So we'll use quarry's vault or the rock. So basically the compactor, no compaction there, you're just filling the hole with something that is not compactable.
Right.
And we'll cap it with the crushed rock when the contractor is able to come back and do that.
How long does it take to take the sand rock and put it back on?
It's about an hour a vehicle.
So it's not terrible.
No.
Still, it's not significant.
And if there's a lull in the weather, it's better for us to keep the guys busy doing things like that too, so.
I feel like we should bury it.
Surprise! Inside is nothing. A clean, never used, never had any. Ah, just kidding.
Um, you know, I have, thanks for the first one, just walking around. All last week, Citizen gave another speech about the dynamics building. An accurate speech, but anyway. And essentially, in a nutshell, saying the commissioner's concern over getting rid of that building because some private party was all based on park. At least for me, it isn't. It's a very small percentage of it. But I'm thinking we're going to need to dive into some more details. We're going to need or I'm going to need anyway. I know you did a cost estimate years ago for this stuff. What that would take. If you could find that, add for inflation. I don't redo it, don't put that much time in it, but add for inflation. I also know that we're planning on putting some type of garages there for the buses. So if we don't have that area, we could now need to find a new area, which could probably be more lots, more houses, more provisions. Right, so a guest, I would like a guest to know what that would cost. The tax payers, if we don't just property carry out. That'll kind of be a good start, but be aware, you could be hearing from Larry that the city council is fine if the county wants to come up with some other way to provide parking versus that area, as long as the city doesn't have an expense for said part. In other words, if that's 35 spots, we want a like public auction, a building, create 35 other spots, the cities will be. Obviously, that would be a cost effect, minor opportunity. But anyway, Larry might be reaching that direction if I'm correct.
And could you, what I'd like to see, I I agree with all of that. I think that will be really helpful to have that information again.
Sure.
And then that's an alternative, but then also maybe next week or whenever it's convenient. Actually, once you're ready to, as part of that discussion, because I don't want to put you on the spot as far as, we don't, we don't need this next week. It's there, but when you're ready, part of that conversation needs to be about what that parking actually is. Because as Commissioner Christopher alluded to was, it wasn't just, you know, parking for people, you know, citizens or what we were talking about. We have a lot of fleet vehicles that we have to put in somewhere. And that was, I believe, part of the plan. I don't think that's been really articulated well, that folks are just thinking, well, what's the, what's the difference? Or we don't, we don't need the spaces, you know, we really need those 35, or whatever it is. It's like, well, that it wasn't just parking, it was parking, but it that had an expanded meaning to it, meaning. We have fleet vehicles that we need to have someplace closed. I mean, we used to have all these annexes that we had stuff kind of stacked around that were kind of went with those buildings and now it's all here. And we, we obviously don't have the space to do that here, so we have to do it somewhere. And that's what's going to be the somewhere that was, you know, like, right? And, you know, as far as for senior services and public works and all those, that and then, yeah, some kind of garage, a small shop. And I mean, I know there was some part of the plan.
If you're ready with all of that fun information, my recommendation is instead of having it as an update in your morning, regular stuff to put it as an item for discussion on the afternoon agenda so that the citizens that would like more information can tune in and actually have the same information that we have.
Okay, yeah, I'll do that. Yeah, I don't know how much of it I'll get that this week, but yeah, we'll start digging next week.
We have lots of time.
Okay. Okay. Anything else?
No, it's all that else I have.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate the extra gravel on the sidewalks.
Good, good, yeah.
Tell them to turn their spread around a little.
Yeah, well, I just. Is this little, for the, I would say the back door, the side door, is that heated too, the little stretch of the sidewalk? Or was it just D I?
Heated from the building out to the.
To the parking lot.
Yeah.
Okay, I want, because I thought, wow, they did a really good job of getting everything off of it.
The only other thing I have that I didn't really think we needed to mention in your where to park, you know, that you sent to employees.
Yeah.
Was when I told you today, there was an employee from the health department that parked at the battery charging spot at the end and they came into the building, but they've not battery car. You fake, but I'm assuming eventually we're going to have signs up that say something.
Got the signs yesterday and they were. Yeah, they say for battery charger vehicles only, no parking and you're not charged, basically is what it says, so.
You're unplugged in.
Yeah.
And then hopefully if our employees are using the plug-in, they're like, we do have one at Toyota that uses it. They pull their car around, plug it in, charge it for an hour, and they go out with the problem. So it does, they don't park it all day long, which is fine with me. So.
Okay. Yeah, the signs will go up.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Go with visitor if you want.
Yeah. Council member Walling, did you have something or just wander around?
You've kept your.
Sir. Probably need the fudge, but.
Yeah, maybe.
Actually, I didn't plan on saying anything. I was just downstairs getting my booster shot, so I haven't passed out yet, so.
All right. Haven't grown a tail yet, so.
Well, anyway, yeah, back on the, you know, the council just said the building belongs to the county, you know, so whatever decided to do, you know. The other thing, you know, we've come in, John Millen, we've come in and talked about the restroom. The Mary Hill Board has accepted, you know, to get the capital projects grant. And they're going to try to work out some way how they're going to pay for it. They have until really June of 23 to actually finish it. So I don't know if they're going to work on it right away or they're going to, well, they're going to figure it out. I told them to be lucky if you get a bill by July or August of 22. And then you would only have maybe three months of expense. Then and then after that, then you would have more time to try to figure out, you know, how much is it really going to cost? How much maintenance is really involved? And so anyway, that's, we're pleased about that. The chamber has to fill out a little paperwork and send it into the Department of Commerce. And then everyone's on vacation now, so I'll probably do that person next week. And then hopefully then we'll be out of the chamber, be out of.
I saw a Facebook post from Mary Hill that was talking about applications for camp host type thing like you were talking about.
Yeah. Well, did they put it on Facebook?
I saw, yeah, it was a couple of weeks ago. I saw it on there, something like, good, at least they're starting now.
Okay, I, that I didn't see. Yeah, well, I think it is too.
Were they planning on, the one thing I never asked you, were they planning on putting that person's trailer at Stonehead where at Mary?
Well, I thought that they were going to put it at the Stonehead. Because there's, well, there's been a few little problems going on, you know. And also, there's been some people, what I've been told is camper just come in there, just spend the weekend or spend a week or two or whatever. That's been going on for maybe a couple of years. And I think that's the idea of having a camper there, the security for the whole area. And if that person wants to kind of do a little work on that someday on the restroom, that would be great. But I don't know if that's in the plan, you know, so, yeah. So otherwise, no, I guess that's.
Okay, well, that's mostly good news.
Yeah, right, yeah, yeah. As I know, yeah.
We'll take it.
Yeah, exactly, like, yeah, yeah, I, it it was just, I don't know, it was very frustrating that they didn't want to jump in and say, yeah, this is great, you know. It's Representative Gina Mossberger, you know, she made it a priority project to put that in, you know, so, you know, we were to get the grant. Anyway, that's all.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
I'll see if I can make it downstairs now.
Without passing out?
Yeah, exactly.
Please don't.
I'd rather get a blunt because.
I think there. A Milky Way bar for it. Anything else before we break for lunch? Entertain a motion.
Motion.
I will have a make a motion for lunch. Come back at what about? I will step down a second. The motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. We are recessed until 1 o'clock. I will call the meeting to order. Let the record show that Commissioner Chris or Commissioner Thawder are present. Commissioner Anderson is away. I will call the meeting to order, let the record show that Commissioner Chris or Commissioner Soder are present, Commissioner Anderson is away.
Mr. Chairman, I can motion that be approved, the business agenda is presented.
I will step down and second that motion. All who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, we'll go, let's do our pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every being and justice for all.
Could call at the top of. No meeting minutes.
No, which will bring us to citizen comment. This is an opportunity for citizens to. Provide comment to the board of commissioners, please limit your comments to three minutes or less. We have no public, assuming, in chambers, so I will go online first. If there's anybody that wishes to provide public comment, raise your hand or unmute yourself, get our attention. Okay. Now, if you change your mind. Speak up. Okay, if anybody just joined us, we are in citizen comment period. If you wish to provide citizen comment to the board, unmute yourself or raise your hand or do something, get our attention. Okay, we are still in citizen comment. If there's anybody that wishes to provide comment to the board, this is your opportunity. Assuming the folks in chambers know or wish to use citizen comment. Okay. You're online, unmute yourself, raise your hand.
Oh.
Raise your hand.
They were in. But they usually are just in the stuff. Its own. Tracy, your hand is raised, go ahead.
Thank you, commissioners, and happy holidays. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, you sound coming in good.
Okay, good. So, I just have comments. One is, you have a couple of job openings now that I wanted to apply for. And when I went to apply on the government jobs website that you guys use. Since my data has recently been hacked, unfortunately, I went into the privacy policies, as I do now, from now on. And in the privacy policies, the government jobs. Company that you folks use for your, for hiring. They take a lot of data, so they take your social security number, they take your financials, they take your I, IP address. And to confirm this, I went to the unemployment office in Oregon and had my friend Eric over there take a look. And asked him if it's, if it's worth applying for this job with you guys. And he applied no, so he went ahead and called last Friday to your HR department. And confirmed that this was the only way that a person could apply for a job. So I'm requesting that you folks, the commissioners, look over that government jobs website and their privacy policy. See if possibly you could change some of the information that they collect from people, so that it's not dangerous to apply for jobs for the community. So that's my first request, and my, my second is, yes, I'm sorry.
No, continue, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay, okay. So my second, my sec- second, actually just, I wanted to just let you know. That in March of twenty-twenty-one, the federal communications company, or, or federal communications place. Said that there was a security alert, a security. Alert for the. Chinese communications with, it's called H U A W A I. And, and then there's another one called L E, I can't remember the last digit on that. But anyway, and they do have a, a program going on right now until January fourteenth of next year. That they reimburse any, anybody that has those Chinese communications equipment. They'll reimburse you one hundred percent to destroy those communications equipment and replace them with something that's not a security threat. And I didn't know if the commissioners knew that program was going on, and if so, have you implemented it into the various departments and of, that use communications?
I was, I was, that's the first I've heard of it. I will pass that on.
Okay, would you like me to email you a link to that?
I'm sure, yeah, that would be fine, go ahead.
Okay.
Send it to HR, so. Yeah, HR at clicketeccounty.org.
Okay, will do. You, Bella's have a happy New Years, and we'll see you next, next week.
Okay, but thank you. Okay, we are, we are still in citizen comment. If there is another citizen that wishes to provide public comment, this is your opportunity. If you are online, unmute yourself or raise your hand. Playing somewhere else. Do we get email? Everybody have a good holiday? Yes? Those online, they're shaking their head, yes. Non-verbal. Were you able to find parking okay?
This week, everybody's.
Somebody at lunchtime asked us about if the new building was open, we said, oh, yeah. Come in and they said, oh, it's, they've been by there, it's hard, there's no parking. So we said, well, we did try to. Encourage that last week, so. Some more spaces for the public in the new building.
I usually park back here off a grand, and I will have to say it's a lot nicer now, since, I don't know what spurred it, but there's a lot of lighting back there after dark. Because last year at this time, I hated to park there, because I felt like I was creepy and a key, and I didn't know what was in the movies.
Love the lighting back there, it's a great addition.
It, that's spectacular, it's wonderful, feel safe walking back there.
And they're going to add some more when they pay for it.
Yeah, they'll be more.
We are in citizen comment, so. I'll ask every time a, a new person comes in the room, it's possible they might want to make citizen comment. No Denise, no citizen comment? No, okay, just, just checking. It's okay, I'll go back online if there's anybody, unmute yourself or raise your. Talented. Some of us are in the room, we're not feeling here.
Who?
Eight-three-seven-six.
Three-three-seven-six, go ahead.
Okay, how you doing today?
Pretty good, go ahead, sir.
Yeah, this is Ken McKeon again. I talked to you last week about surplusing the Annex One. I didn't get to finish my message because of the time restraints with three minutes, and I'd like to point out that that three minutes used to be seven minutes years ago. For some reason, it got chopped down to three. But anyway, I just wanted to let Commissioner Christopher know, because I did get to talk with Jay, Commissioner Soder, a little bit. That I did find somebody that has the ability to refurbish that building, if it was made available. The public through the surplus market. I sent you guys a, a email, or a, yeah, an email, I guess it was, I don't know if you were able to open it up, it was a city council meeting from about a week ago. My presentation to them. That would pretty much explain to you what's going on. With, with the desire to. Have it available. So I just wanted to double check with you, let you know that. If it happens, it'll happen. If it don't happen, I guess it, it don't happen. I know there's a lot of people that don't think it's such a good idea. And it would be a. Huge accomplishment if it could be done. I know that, that old building has its problems, and Mr. Crocker from, or, or Portis Capital. Is real familiar with those kind of problems, but it may be too much even for him, so, but unless we get him in here and let him assess it, assess it. Him and/or somebody else. And what, you know, what would, how would it be so hard on, on the county, you know? Why would it be so bad for the county to have somebody else have to go in there and clean it up? You guys are going to have a quarter, a half, a quarter to a half a million dollar bill tearing that thing down. The city paid two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, or not the city, but the. The gentleman that got the old nursing home property, his, his bill was a quarter of a million dollars. So. It wouldn't take much to, you know, a little paperwork to offer it to the public, and if nobody wants it, guess what? You get your parking lot. And right across the street from Annex One is a parking lot, next to the old, the parts store. Goldendale Auto Parts Store. That parking lot is owned by a company in Yakima. Like, you know, the county's been buying up property all over the place for parking, why can't you make a deal to, to buy that property? You seem to be able to make some pretty good deals somehow in the past, so you've got houses and businesses and. Anyway, you guys have a great one, and I probably won't talk to you again until next year.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Happy New Year to you as well.
Thank you.
Okay, we are still in citizen comment. If there's anybody that wishes to. Address the board, this is your opportunity. If you are online, unmute yourself, raise your hand. Get our attention one way or the other. Get our attention one way or the other. We're just not very talking today. Thank you. Reserving their energy for later. Did you find what you needed yesterday?
I hope so. Tomorrow.
Yeah, I have the same response. I hope so.
That was already our second trip.
No. Anytime you're doing plumbing, it's a multiple trip. Any project. Right, which then you don't actually use and then you go get more. And then buy a second. I have a lot of, I have a lot of totes. When you have an emergency. You still won't have it. Okay, we are still in citizen comment. If there's anybody online who wishes to provide comment. This is your opportunity.
Hey there, hey, my name is John Jessup and I live at one forty Buck Creek Road, White Salmon, Washington. And, um, we wanted to make comment on, um, on the John Anderson Bridge that's gonna be going across, that's applying to go across Buck Creek. And I can't tell, nothing's really happening on the phone.
Right, yeah, sir, we're, we're in general, uh, citizen comment right now that, uh, there will be a that's scheduled at one thirty, so this is to provide comment on, um, anything else that's not on the agenda later. So if you wish to provide comments about that proposal, uh, you'll have to wait.
Okay, I didn't know that. Okay, I'll, I'll mute again and wait.
Okay. Okay, we are still in citizen comment, which is just of a general nature for items that we don't have meetings or hearings scheduled later. So unmute yourself, raise your hand. Okay, the time being one thirty, a time we've set aside for public hearings, public meetings and bid openings. Our first order of business is a public meeting to consider the planning commission's recommendation for approval of a shoreline substantial development permit and a shoreline conditional use permit, SH twenty twenty one dash zero two of the Buck Creek Bridge Project. The applicant is John Anderson. I will start, uh, we will start with a brief staff report. Okay, we will start with a brief description of the proposal, staff.
Okay, um, what we have here is an opportunity for the board to, um, provide input actually. Uh, to consider the planning commission's recommendation of approval of shoreline substantial development and shoreline conditional use application. Number SH twenty twenty one dash O two, the applicant, John Anderson, is proposing to build a bridge over Buck Creek in the Houston City. Board may summarily accept the planning commission's recommendation or hold a long public hearing. If you wish to modify the decision, the board's decision will be forwarded to the Department of Ecology for final approval.
Um, as was stated, this is a public meeting, it's not a public hearing, so there is discretion on the part of the chair in taking comments from the public. Typically, I would, uh, I would support that.
I do have a question.
Yes.
Is the reason this is not a public hearing is because of the planning commission?
Yes.
So this is just fine with testimony, I would just want to clarify.
And at this point, I would, um, I actually will give the applicant, if they wish, an opportunity to, uh, provide comment to the board if you wish. I do see Mr. Anderson is on, uh, he's on our screen. So this would be an opportunity. Okay. Does not appear to be interested in doing that. I will now open this, uh, public meeting. I will accept, uh, public comment on this proposal. I think we should limit, uh, comment to the, as we do in other things, three minutes. Please, if you wish to provide comment, which we did have a gentleman earlier. Right, and we did it, we did receive the emails this morning. They are part of the, part of the record. The board was given, uh, those as well as the emails we received last week as well, uh, prior to this hearing. So if there's anybody in the public that wishes to provide public comment on this proposal, uh, this is your opportunity. Unmute yourself, raise your hand.
Hi, hi there, this is John Jessup again. I can't raise my hand, I'm calling in.
That's fine.
On a line.
Could I go ahead? Name an address or at least community if you wouldn't, if you would please, sir.
Yeah, John Jessup and Rebecca Schwartz and Truver on one forty Buck, White Salmon, Washington.
Go ahead, sir.
Yeah, we're, we're concerned about the bridge going in without knowing what kind of developments going on the other side of the creek. We live along the creek, um, bordering, um, Mr. Anderson's property and, um, well, I can appreciate his situation, his desire for a bridge. I understand the need for that bridge, given that he has, um, has, uh, access on the other side of the creek for a home. And we're concerned about development on that side of the creek because of, um, just in the past year, there's been considerable logging and a lot of dust, noise and, um, already there's a ton of, a ton of dust that comes up on, on the road dumping into Buck Creek and, and, um, and we're concerned about it coming from that side, both through our house and into the creek. I'm, I'm sorry for all the noise. We're, we're calling in from a restaurant's, um, wifi. Um, and then, uh, I, I, I don't know, I think it would just be helpful in terms of making the decision whether the bridge should go in or not, what's going in on the other side? Um, whether we would be forward or not because, um, of the delicacy to the creek and to the environment there. That, that's all I have to say.
Okay. Thank you, sir. And just so you know, we, we weren't actually hearing any other noise, so it was, it was fine. Yeah.
Am I muted now?
No, you, we can still hear you, sir.
Okay.
That sounded like me. Okay, we are still, I'm still providing, uh, an opportunity for folks to comment on this proposal. Mr. Anderson, I see your camera is on if you wish to, uh, to address the board. You unmute yourself, sir?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
So on John's concern about, uh, what's going on across the creek from his, his, uh, home there. As of right now, it's just one house for my own, own personal use. But I do have three children. And I probably could see in the future, they may want to build something over there too, just being candid about it, but I don't know when that might be or if. Um, so it's not like it's gonna be a development for selling off lots or anything like that. My intention is to keep it as much in one parcel as possible. Keep the creek as beautiful and pristine as it has been for the last ninety years that our family has owned it. As far as the dust goes, I'm sorry about that, John. It's, uh, it's just part of logging and, um, uh, I understand your concern and we tried to help mitigate it as during the time that you had your family reunion there, so, um, I don't know if that answers your question, but it's, it's not, it's been in our family for the acreage for ninety years. The only people that's ever built on our property has been myself, my brother and his son. And I don't think any of us look forward to adding anything other than just family members for the foreseeable future.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
Yes.
Okay, is there anybody else that wishes to provide public comment on this proposal? Unmute yourself, star six if you're on a phone. Not seeing anybody. Okay, I will now close the meeting to further public comment. This is now an opportunity for the board, if necessary, to ask questions of staff, the applicant, uh, and look for any kind of clarifications of information in the record. So, uh, go ahead, Commissioner Anderson, or Commissioner Christopher.
He looks so much alike. Both so young and full headed hair.
Yes.
Um, I do have a question for staff that I hope that you can maybe, uh, enlighten me on. As this parcel is of resource land, what are the processes that this applicant have to go through? If they were going to put in some kind of single family dwelling, you know, five houses, ten houses, whatever, kind of thing like that, and not just house here, house there.
In resource land, so many, a resource land evaluation, if you can, you go through that process prior to developing the lots, find out what, what they could be, how many, what size open area needs to be, how many lots, what size of lots.
Just like with everything else, I'm assuming stream water runoff will be taken into account when that happens.
Um, not in the resource land evaluation. We're looking at soil types and, and suitability, um, when, once it's determined how many lots, how big, what the open area needs to be, et cetera, then the applicant or the.
then the applicant or the landowner would apply for a short flat, you know, application, and then at that time, all of the different, um, you know, access, um, stormwater, you know, clear areas, environmental, you know, you know, the different departments would get, get involved, get into the typical short flat process, including the environment.
Um, and I have one question for the applicant, Mr. Anderson, if you can hear me. Uh, not that it pertains much to this, but I'm just curious, you've not done some logging over there? Do you know, uh, how many board feet of timber you've taken off the property recently and/or in the future, near future?
Sure.
Ballpark.
Ballpark, yeah. Um, we've taken ballpark, um, probably, I'm guessing twenty-five truckloads, whatever that might be. Um, we're done logging, there was a partial thin along the creek, above the creek, two hundred feet set back from the creek. Um, although, and that is all completed, so there will be no more logging in that area. I do have another eighty acres north of, uh, there that I, is set up for a clear cut, but it's quite a ways off from the creek. I don't think it'll have any impact on the creek at all, borders up against state land up north.
Okay.
Uh, so there's probably when, there's gonna be some, I don't know how much is gonna come out of there. I'm, I'm not so sure I want to cut it all at this time or when, when that might happen, but there, there is some where to, to, to come out at some future time. And it would probably.
The truckloads was a good measurement for me because, I don't know, I don't look at twenty-five truckloads, it's a lot. So, uh, I think that's quite reasonable.
Well, there's a substantial amount of timber on there. I mean, there is, it just is, it's a resource that, uh, is in demand, so.
But, thank you, sir.
Okay.
Any other questions? For other questions, okay? Um, I just have one. Well, you have multiple. The thesis, wow, great, thanks. No, it is, uh, just to follow up on Commissioner Christopher's earlier question. The construction of the bridge in and of itself does not in any way, um, or shadow any, I mean, it doesn't, any future potential development, we'll have to go through a full public process. The resource land evaluation determine how many, what size, what could be done, and then once that was determined, if the applicant wanted to, to actually do that and create some lots, that would go through a public process, a short flat or subdivision, I suppose, if it was, uh, more than four lots. Um, and then all of those factors, as far as stormwater runoff, traffic and water use and all of those things would be analyzed at the time of that short flat application. And so.
That was, that was my concern. So if we're looking at residential development where, you know, pretty much everybody should know, man, like, concerned about fire, you know, ingress and egress, but that doesn't pertain to this, because this is where the bridge we get to a potential, uh, short platted building of that nature, then that's where those conflicts might be raised.
Okay, any other questions?
That's all right.
Okay, I have no more as well.
Um, Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve the shoreline substantial development permit and shoreline conditional use permit, SH two zero two one dash zero two, uh, therefore forwarding to the Department of Ecology for final approval.
Okay, I will step down in a second. Motion. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
You have this from that approval?
Yes, we do. Do you want to sign right now?
Um, you don't have to sign right now.
We'll, we'll get it to you by the end of the day.
Mr. Anderson, if you're still there and listening, I would like to say thank you for, uh, keeping that two hundred foot buffer with the creek, the, the shorelines, the repairing areas are a big deal to me. Uh, so I, I, I hope we can look forward to you making them a big deal to you as well.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Commissioners, appreciate your time for considering this and approving it, I really do appreciate it, it means a lot to our, our family and my father's legacy.
Just to clarify that we will be forwarding this permit approval to the Department of Ecology, who has the ultimate last word.
Right. With our, the recommendation.
Yes.
Okay, our next order, our next order of business is a public hearing to consider revisions to the Clickitack County redistricting plan uh, by making no changes of the county commission district boundaries or to the Clickitack County Code, Chapter one, point twelve, point zero one zero, title of district, district boundaries designated. Let me start, uh, the, uh, update again, if you, if you wish, uh, from elections in the, in the county auditor.
Okay, so, um, I just wanted to say that we presented the draft redistricting plan last week and don't have any further information to present. Uh, just asking if you have any questions about that thing.
I would actually ask us to, um, I'll, uh, ask us to hold that and we will take public comment upon the, the draft redistricting plan. Uh, I will note for the record, we did receive several, some, um, comments, which I think probably were forwarded to you as well. Yeah, both for, both for and against, we actually had some today that were in support of the, uh, current redistricting plan, which is, don't change, basically is the status quo. Uh, given that, at this point, I will now open the public hearing for the purpose of taking public comment on the draft uh, redistricting plan as it has been submitted. So if there's anybody in the public that wishes to provide public comment on this, this is your opportunity. Please unmute yourself, raise your hand, star six if you're on a phone. Get our attention. Tracy, go ahead.
Thank you, Commissioner, thank you, Commissioner. Um, so I am, uh, I actually don't know about this redistrict, redistricting plan. Um, if you could just give a little bit of, um, background or information to it. I did look online and look at the map of the plan, and I understand that each Commissioner has a different area of the district, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so, um, who has the central, uh, Clickitack District, the one that was in beige?
That's District Two, so that is, I am from that district.
Okay, so that's you, Commissioner Sauter.
Correct.
Okay, and then, um, for that District Two, um, are they joined in, in any way, um, with the Sherman County, Hood River County and Wasco County?
No, I don't, I don't believe so.
Okay, okay, that's all I had, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to provide comment on the draft redistricting? Okay, there being none. I will now close the public hearing to further public comment on this. This is now an opportunity if there are questions to be asked.
Questions? Some other questions.
Or comments, this is.
Comment I will make it this week is, is I wish we'd got this with enough time to actually make the changes. Uh, but we didn't, uh, there's nothing wrong with this plan the way it is. So I will accept it.
Uh, I would comment to, um, I see nothing wrong with this draft plan, it is the status quo, it meets all the criteria. Um, it is, I guess it's unfortunate that we don't have, that we cannot be fully responsive to, you know, we've had some, questions raised, or, or I wouldn't even say questions, really, requests as far as about moving some of the boundaries around. You know, and I typically, we want to try to be responsive if we can. This is within, you know, we meet, at least from, at least from my perspective, this, this plan meets all the criteria that is necessary for a redistricting plan, and so it's not necessary, given the short timeline. Uh, plus, if you, uh, you know, we've only heard from a few people in that kind of one area, in the Trout Lake area, about, uh, uh, the issues there. There's no way for us to know had we moved boundaries around that were different, we could have heard from entirely different communities. Um, and so, sorry, that's the timer, timed myself out. And so, you know, given that, I don't, uh, said I'm, I am inclined to support this draft plan, as I said, I think it meets all the criteria. If the community members feel very strongly about it, there is an opportu, there is an appeal opportunity to this plan, if they so choose. It is not, it is to superior court, and so that is an option that is available to folks if they really feel like to, we've missed the mark on this. Yes, sir.
And I would just add that with our limited time to adjust things and change boundaries and resize older precincts, uh, based on the late census of the COVID year and how late the census took, I don't want to have to try to rush through anything and, and, you know, kind of go about correcting and putting Trout Lake all in one area again. Just rush out willy nilly in a hurry, so if it can't be timed and processed and having public hearings by all the people that are gonna be duly affected, I think continuing the, the status quo, uh, for the most part does no harm. Over to you.
Okay, I have no further comment either. So at this point, I guess, um, with that, I would entertain a motion.
Sir, Mr. Chairman, I would, uh, make a motion that we approve the revision, revisions to the Clickitack County redistricting plan by making no changes to the Clickitack County district boundaries or to the Clickitack County Code, Chapter one, dot, one, two, dot, zero, one, zero, title of Commissioners, District Boundaries, delegated or designated.
I will step down in a second, that motion. I have a motion in the second, any discussion? My only discussion was I want to thank you, the auditor, and especially Brandy, because I know, I mean, I, I know you probably did post a heavy lift.
She did.
And with, uh, other, other staff in the department. Uh, and on a pretty tight timeframe, and you don't have other stuff going on as well. Uh, so I just really want to thank you for, for, for doing the heavy lifting and getting us the data. Appreciate that.
I would, I would, just got a second, all of what he said, when he said it, so I will let him have that.
Okay. Um, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm gonna move this on to consent.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve, it can send us all fifteen items.
Yeah, I'll step down a second, that motion as well. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to renew the accounts payable warrants in the amount of one million, three hundred and sixty-six thousand, three hundred and seventeen dollars and three cents of the payroll benefit warrants, the amount of one million, seventy thousand, three hundred and sixty-four dollars and fifty cents for the date hitting December twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one.
Okay, I will step down in second motion, pay the bills. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Chairman, I make a motion to be paid, pay estimate number seven, Elite Contractors LLC in the amount of thirty-one thousand, eight hundred and seventy-two dollars and seventy-two cents, which excludes retained, should be about one thousand, five hundred and ninety-two dollars and sixty-four cents, and includes sales tax in the amount of two thousand, three hundred and eighty-eight dollars and ninety-five cents for the total payment amount of thirty-three thousand, six hundred and forty-nine dollars and three cents for the Clickitack County Courthouse entrance improvement project C zero six, eight two one.
I will step down in second, the motion, a motion is second to approve estimate number seven to the contractors. Uh, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Passes. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to be paid, pay estimate number one, and final to Northwest Natural Homes LLC in the amount of three thousand, six hundred and eighty-eight dollars and thirty-three cents for the courthouse each east entrance stucco.
Yeah, I will step down in second, that motion. I have a motion is second to approve pass of number one and final, uh, to Northwest Natural Homes LLC. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Any more pending we want to look at? It's gotta get to the year, it's, it's okay.
Oh, I got some end of the year house.
No, that's, okay, it'll be first of the year house. Okay, which brings us to elected officials report update prosecuting attorney. Mr. Canal, I didn't know if you had, I'm not seeing you, or Rebecca, did you have anything that you needed to bring to the board's attention?
David is on today, and I don't have anything to add, thank you.
Okay. Good, uh, just let me, I, I will say to you, Rebecca, thank you for, I know you're, you're providing a lot of help and assistance with the public records request that the various departments are getting. We really appreciate, uh, being able to, um, you know, get some assistance, making sure what's a public records request, what's not, how we, how we respond to those, so I know that's been kind of, uh, given over to you, as that's kind of in your area duties right now, so I appreciate that.
I'm happy to help.
Hope you're early, we can make it before two o'clock.
All righty, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we adjourn this regular meeting.
Okay, I will step down in second, that motion, I have a motion is second to adjourn the regular meeting, we have no workshops scheduled the rest of the week. So, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. We are adjourned, everybody.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.